My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we just come before you tonight asking for wisdom and grace as we make decisions on behalf of our city. We ask that you watch over the men and women of our armed forces, Lord, and our president, as well as all of his staff. We ask you to watch over the mayor and the staff of the city, Lord, and guide them as they make direction. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you all for joining us for our March 5, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, and I'll call this meeting to order if we can do real talk.
Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
James David.
Here.
Vivian Haney.
Here.
Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker. Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Ben Peters. Dale Tyler.
Here.
Minutes from the previous meeting for February. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next section on here, tabled items that we had, and by the way, we have one tabled item for this evening for large scale, 19-04 Wabi Lane Apartments. That will not be heard this evening. So if you're here just for that, that one is tabled for this meeting. Going back to the first item we have on here, our 19-06 Armando Carrillo, 2300 Turner, from C2 to C5. There's also a variance, B19-13, for deviation of frontage from 100 feet to 67 feet, presented by Armando Carrillo. If you can come up here to the mic, please.
Just going to be in my turn, please. Good afternoon. We're here for 2300 Turner Street, hoping to get the rezoning from C2 to C5, and the variance from 100 to 67 feet.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates light industrial or warehouse use for the property. The C5 zoning would be considered to be a downgrade in zone. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Approve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations, and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists, including neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission? Any comments or questions from commissioners?
My first question is...
Hang on just a second. Sorry.
Hello. Danny Wright, Springdale Police Department. The only thing that might draw us a little bit concerned is the close proximity of residential neighborhoods. With it going to C5, it could easily be an entertainment center or nightclub, which it's planning to be, is an entertainment center. And we would hate to see some type of issue with the neighborhood.
And you're referring to the residential that's across the street, correct? Okay.
Go ahead, Vivian.
My question is, are you all already using it for that purpose?
No, we purchased as a... It used to be a catering kitchen. It was more, the person that owned it before us had it to cook meals and prepare trucks to take it to J.B. Hunt and different companies. She closed a year before she actually sold it to my brother, and it hasn't been used. We did have a birthday party for the family, but it was for us.
And that was this weekend?
No, ma'am. No.
So Saturday, when I went by, there was people going in and out, and there was 15 or more cars?
No.
No, because I got the key, and nobody else has the key.
They have been told that in order, once it's rezoned...
It was on Sunday.
Or Sun... Yeah. My answer...
Not Sunday. I got a family reunion in the morning, like, it was like 11 o'clock, so yeah. And now it was on a party.
No, not Saturday.
It was on Sunday.
It may have been Sunday. But it was late in the day. So there was people there late.
Yeah, but it was not like 4:00, not music, nothing loud.
But it was more like 4:00, not morning.
Yeah, it was on 211, so maybe late.
They have been told that in order to operate that type of business that they're on, they would have to have paved parking. They don't have enough paving. They have to meet fire code issues if there are any foreign assembly-type use at that location. Those kind of things would still have to be done.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
And I know what the capacity of that would be. If it gets rezoned, how many, I mean, how large of a party... We're going to have to talk to the fire marshal about that, because I don't know if you've been out there and looked to see what the capacity would be. I'm just wondering, how much traffic are we looking at? And like I said, I mean, I kind of got the impression they're already using it right now.
Dwayne Miller, Springdale Fire Marshal. We have not been to the location. The location is large enough, it will require fire separation or a fire sprinkler system. So as of right now, it can't be used for assembly.
They will have to go through all those with the building inspector and the fire marshal before they can get a certificate of occupancy for that type of use at that location.
And we understand and we're willing to make any changes needed.
Remember, we're rezoning it to C5, that all of the permitted uses in C5 are allowed at that location, even though they're telling us what they want to use it for right now. Remember that as well.
Is we a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Haney.
No.
Mueller.
No.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
No.
Tyler.
Yes.
Passes 5-3.
Staff will prepare the ordinance and it goes to council on the 26th. And...
Thank you.
Call for the vote for the, hang on, for the variance.
Now, keep in mind, a C2 zoning didn't have a minimum frontage along a public street. They do have a larger portion at the back where the facility is actually located, but they only have 67 feet at the street.
Call for the vote.
Oh, can I ask a question on the variance? Is... So how wide is that driveway going to be if they've got cars coming in and out? You know, because the type of facility it is, people are going to be coming a lot at the same time. The maximum driveway width that they could have is 40 feet. If they centered it on that 67 feet, it would have, you know, 10 feet on each side if they made the maximum width of the drive at the street itself. They'll have to come back with a site plan to show us how that's going to work. Yeah. And what is average for something where you have a large traffic coming in and out? Two-way traffic on any street is 24 feet wide. I think fire lane access is 26 in some cases.
Do I have a call for the vote by Mr. Covert?
Yes, sir.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Haney.
No.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
No.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Passes 6-2. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next item on the agenda is a waiver, 18-25 Brittenham Construction, 3325 Butterfly, waiver of sidewalk with payment in lieu of, presented by Ben Harvey.
Excuse me. Yeah, I'm not sure what else to say after that. That's pretty much the whole deal right there.
Well, we went to council, council agreed for you to do a bill of assurance, and you have since decided you want to not do a bill of assurance to put a lien on the property, and you want payment in lieu of improvements?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the city attorney's recommendation was it come back to you guys to approve payment in lieu of improvements rather than the bill of assurance? That's what he's asking for.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
Is this a motion or a... This could be just a call for the vote to allow for the payment in lieu of improvements. Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Was the... I'm sorry, I got a quick question. I put in the letter the amount that we proposed. Does that, how does that come about? I mean, do you guys agree to that now, or...
Aaron, has the engineering officer, have you all looked at this estimate that they submitted, and we're in agreement to that?
No, we, I mean, I think you had 1,500 in there.
Eleven sixteen.
1116, which is $3 a square foot.
We use the cost means, which is going to be about $5 a square foot from 2018, so... Yeah.
Okay. I can present a bid for it, but, I mean, I think five's very high. I'd have a bid today for four, and if we self-reform it's three, so...
Still want to go forward with this?
Yeah.
David.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Her passes 8-0.
You need to get with staff, and we'll come up with the amount that you need to make for payment in lieu of.
Okay. Do I do that? After, like, email or, how do I get with them?
Aaron, how do you want this to, you want to send email or engineering or however?
All right, next item, B19-07 LD Gibson Properties LLC, 615 North Kansas, variance for deviation of front setback from 30 feet to 8 feet, presented by Larry Gibson.
First of all, let me say that we have worked, staff has worked with Larry directly to come up with, I think, a good alternative that we think's going to work. We hope you think it's going to work well for this location, too.
Yes.
You want to go over the changes?
Sure. We had hoped that we could make something work where we could get, where we can get the broad view of the structure facing, you know, the broadest street, Walnut, and that's why we turned it that way initially. We had garages in the middle and two three-bedroom, two baths, one on either side, and we were in the hope that we could make that work. We got a variance for the amount of square feet required initially in order to get, to start that drawing, but we just couldn't make it work. We just didn't have, without going up, we didn't make it work, and frankly, I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with that kind of structure, long-term renting, and so on and so forth. So I gave it back to my architect, and he turned it the other way, where we'd have eight-foot setbacks off of Walnut and off of the south property line, 30-foot setback off of Kansas, and then a 20-foot setback off the alleyway. We're still going to be able to accomplish covered parking by using carports, so, you know, it'll effectively not change the value or the rent that I can, that we can get for the, for the structure itself, and it'll, with the look that we're going to have, I talked to Aaron about it the other day, a week or so ago, we were up, and we're going to do some things with the view, people, with the view on the front, the view on the side, that's going to make it aesthetically pleasing, and it's just a better thing facing it towards Kansas.
So your variance request is still for that eight-foot, because it's a corner lot, to have a standard eight-foot side setback on the Walnut Street side?
Yes, ma'am.
Aaron, is there anything that we...
That's not how this reads on here.
Well, he is, it's a front setback on the Walnut Street side from 30 to 8.
So the one that went in your packet has the two going on Walnut, and that was the one we kicked back, and this is the one that Larry presented to us with the access off of Kansas. This one that you're seeing right now is the one that we would accept as staff.
One that's on the screen right here.
No, I understand that, but the way this reads, it's a variance on Kansas.
You're amending your variance request to be the eight-foot variance on Walnut.
Yeah, the one that he was talking about with us was for the Walnut request, to have an eight-foot setback, because we have a double frontage on the lots there, 30-foot on 30-foot, so...
Okay, I just want to make sure it's represented, because it's not on this here.
Physical address of 615 Kansas for both, both...
That will be the address for the structure. It will have a Kansas Street access.
Yeah, this is changing.
But in this scenario, Walnut is a side.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
There's no entrance on this property.
Yeah, it's cleared right now.
There's no entrance on this property.
It's a confusing piece here. I just want to make sure, for the record, that it's represented appropriately in here.
The, it will actually be addressed the way the orientation of the house sits. That's how we do on a double frontage. It can change addressing depending on the way the frontage of the house sits.
Okay.
So there is a carport on Walnut?
There will be two carports. One will face, will face Kansas. There will be a gable over the carport and covering it, because if you had a garage, we require that in addition to the garage, you have two additional car spots, which would not work in this scenario. So this is an infill lot. This is a tight lot to develop on, and these are the scenarios we have to work through with staff, and we're trying to do infill on lots that normally wouldn't be able to do something of this nature. So both will have carports covering them. They have a nice gable that goes all the way over the top of them for what he's presented for a design. And as he said, on the actual carport side, he's going to be doing a screening, some kind of architectural detail, I mean, within what's cost means feasible for him for doing this property, so...
But is, there is an entrance?
Yes.
On this side? I thought, I heard you say it wasn't.
It'll look like two, two single-family homes, is what it'll look like, actually.
And you'll enter into Unit B from Walnut?
One will enter from Kansas, one will enter from Walnut, which is...
Southeast side, I'm sorry. The southeast side is the entrance, right behind the south corner of the, of the south, of the carport, on the east unit.
Yeah.
There is no entrance apart from that carport off of Walnut Street.
But there'll be no, not enough space for a driveway? So tell me where the two additional cars...
Yeah, there's adequate space for a driveway. He only has, the reason he went with a carport is because he only has to provide the two spaces underneath the carport per ordinance. If he did a garage enclosed, you have to do two additional spaces on top of that, which would front-load it, and that would not leave adequate space, so... And this is actually in line with more of the character of the neighborhood. It is a more of a bungalow, older-style neighborhood that has a lot of detached or carports, something of that nature, so... I don't think we've seen a duplex like this. Most of them are the easy sloping gables with little boxes. This will have a little bit more character to it.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
I'll say I'm in favor of something like this, because that area needs new housing, and it's really hard to make the numbers work if you can only put one unit on that lot. So if he's willing to, you know, make it look nice and fit, you know, still accommodate the cars and fit the two units, I'm for that.
And I would say, since it is something a little different, I'd like to kind of keep an eye on it and see what happens if it passes, and hear back, some feedback, so we know for the future, what, you know, what we need to... Something we can continue to do.
Call for the vote? Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
We'll give you an opportunity to look at this on the lot on the south side, the 611 North Kansas Street, sits on the, joins this property on the south side. There's an infill lot south of it that we bought at the same, we own 611, and we own the infill lot behind it, and we're going to build the same thing on that lot. Unfortunately, we're going to try and build the same thing on this lot. Unfortunately, it's not a corner lot, so we won't have the opportunity to put a carport. We'll put covered parking in, lean to, kind of with some character to it, on the front of the property for four, for four cars, and then a walkway back one side, access with a gable, with a gable covering that walkway, all the way, all the way back to that side. That's our plan. We're going to use this, we're going to use the same floor plan. We don't have any detail on here, I realize I've got the detail, but we're going to, we're going to keep this plan and do some, try and do some more creative things with the parking.
Thank you. Thank you. Next section is on rezoning, R19-07 City of Springdale Parcel Number 18, 815-306-37-000, from MF4 to P1, presented by Patsy Christie.
We change the... This is the property that the city has recently purchased for the construction of a animal shelter. The request is to rezone the property from MF4 to P1, which is an institutional district. The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Community facilities should be centrally located in easily accessible areas within the city adjacent to major streets to accommodate traffic well buffered from nearby residential areas and on adequate side parcels to accommodate future expansion.
Any questions or comments from the audience? If you'll come to the mic and state your name and address, please.
I'd like to speak on this. First of all, let me thank you for your prayers for the veterans. I'm a veteran.
We appreciate your service.
And your prayers for your decision-making. I know that's helpful. I'm a resident on Ivy Lane, which is south of this site. I've been there for a number of years. It is visible from this site, this proposed for this shelter.
If you don't mind, if you could just state your name for the record on here.
Jarvis Teague.
Okay.
1458 Ivy Lane.
Thank you so much.
This actually is a family-oriented neighborhood out there. It's been that way for years. There's numerous houses right across from Don Tyson Parkway to the north of this. There's houses east, there's houses south, there's houses west, which is encircled with what I call people shelter. To do this and put an animal shelter in the middle of this doesn't seem feasible in fairness to the neighbors and what may hinder future development out there, still property to be, houses built on. It is convenient, located, but convenience is not really the total answer to this. Don Tyson Parkway is tremendous traffic oriented, all over the city it's that way. There's a lot of traffic. This could hinder animals in there. I think with all the noise, with the vehicles, the far trucks, the police, the ambulance close by, the rehab center there, the nursing facility, those folks would be right next door to that. I have to feel for those people, but really, you need to give this strong consideration. I want you to pray about it. I think whatever the decision you make, it'll be between you and God. But I'm against this totally for this reason. I don't feel like this is the spot. I think it needs to be more isolated in an outer perimeter somewhere where it can be more secluded off of the main highway or throughways, and maybe have a separate entrance. If it can't be put where there's an existing allowance of code number, of whatever that might be, maybe it could be changed somewhere else off of the main throughfare somewhere and still be convenient. The property's not at a loss. It could still be used for the city under a different usage for city services of some sort, but I don't think it needs to be a shelter. I really don't, and I just appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Peters is not here. Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
This rezoning passes 8-0.
And I tell myself that staff will do the ordinance, and we'll take it to council.
All right. We do appreciate your comments on that. Next item for rezoning, R19-08 Randall and Lisa Chaffin, apologize if I mispronounced your name on that, 8980 West Miller Roads from an A1 to an SF1. We also have as far as a variance to 19-11, that's for 8982 West Miller Road. I'm going to put them together, so you don't have to wait through all this on here.
Great, thank you.
So we'll start with the first one on here is the rezoning.
Okay. So my name's Lisa Chaffin. I am the property owner at 8980 West Miller Road. I purchased that property in January of 2018 and was living out of state at the time. I purchased the property, one, because I loved the house that was on it, and two, because there was space there for me to build a private-use garage for a car collection that I inherited from my father. I pulled permits to build that building in March of 2018 with the hopes of it being a completed project before we moved up here. We moved in June, and the project didn't get started until July, so... I pulled permits with Benton County. That's where my property was located at the time, and when we started the project in July, we were following the requirements that Benton County put forth. In October, my property was annexed into the city of Springdale. I actually had no idea that I was surrounded by the city of Springdale. Wasn't something I really thought about, I guess. And so now my property, my building does not meet the city ordinances, I guess, put forth by the city of Springdale. So in working with the city, we've, we came up with the idea of rezoning it to, from an A1 to an SF1. Maybe a little background to help you understand what I'm trying to do here. The garage is designed to hold eight vehicles, plus there's an additional bay for performing mechanical maintenance and repair on my own cars. There's a second level to the building, and it was designed to house a collection of family artifacts going back four generations. I spent most of my childhood visiting other car collectors and being immersed in this very unique hobby. My dad had a three-story, 14,000-square-foot building, which housed his final collection. He was a collector for his entire life and owned hundreds of cars over the course of his life. His final collection was about 36 cars and all of the things that he had saved from his family growing up. When he passed away in 2015, I found myself in need of someplace to put the things that I had inherited, and those things are currently in a building in Austin, Texas, waiting for their permanent home here in Arkansas. I planned on this being my final home. I hope to never move again. And the thought of the, you know, I put a lot of thought into what an ideal garage would look like and what I needed the space or wanted the space to be like on the inside. I knew the property was surrounded by a neighborhood, and so I did put some extra thought into what the outside of this building would look like, including window placement, where I put windows facing away from the neighborhood to maintain their privacy. It is a two-story building. It is, you know, it does, it is visible from the neighborhood behind me. There are no windows facing that side of, of the, you know, looking out into the neighborhood. And I put a roof on it that was, had a higher pitch to it just for aesthetic reasons, so that it wouldn't just look like a shed. It looks like a nice garage. It will be climate-controlled, which is a necessity for the artifacts that I'm keeping inside of it. These cars are coming up on 100 years old, and it does have plumbing. So in light of the fact that I have been annexed into the city, the rezoning allows it to be a low-density, single-family residential district, and this is a request being made to protect the city in case future owners of the property decided to use the structure as a residence. So I just want to reiterate that my purpose for the building is to preserve and protect my family legacy and to enjoy my car hobby with my families, with my family and friends. And so that's what I'm asking for, is a rezone, so I can... And so that's what I'm asking for is a rezone so I can finish this building and bring my things, finish moving into the state and be done living in two places.
I appreciate the background. That really helps a lot on this whole piece on here. Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use. Rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan as recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Probate locations for single-family should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, environmental factors. Ensure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size. And I do want to remind everyone, this was a city-initiated annexation. It was an island, and we did three or four of them in that area that were islands. When it's totally surrounded by the city all the way around, we go through that process. And that she did have a permit for construction of the structure. And at the time when she got the permit, the 10-foot setback that was allowed, was allowed by county ordinance. And so when she annexed into the city and we look at rezoning it, that's how the variance is, that's why the variance is needed at this point.
Anything from a fire perspective? Dwayne? As far as that.
But there again, the county allowed it to go in there under their regulations when it was in the county too, so. Little bit different situation than what we normally have.
Any questions or comments from the audience? If you'll come up here and state your name and address, please.
My name is Gary Goodman. My address is 8825 Crest Lane. And I'm also representing the Spring Ridge subdivision which surrounds this property. I'm the vice president of the POA Board. The variance setback, can't change it. Building's built. We understand it. Nothing can be done about it. I guess the one request that we have as a neighborhood is, since we had no input from the county, when the county did it, we now have the chance to speak, so thank you for that. We are just going to request if maybe some evergreens could be planted on the two sides that bordered our neighborhood to kind of maybe shield the building. I do have pictures of it I could pass around that shows the sightline from the neighborhood, from my property and from my neighbor's property that directly border the property. So that's the one request, and I know it's probably an unusual request, but it's something that maybe would help soften the look of the building.
Any other comments?
The other is on the rezoning. I guess just questions and clarification. This is, I've never experienced this type of issue, so I had to actually look up SF1 and see what it entailed. But a question is, is the lot being subdivided into two lots? Because I notice there's two addresses now. There's 8980 and 8982, and I think.
There's no proposal from them to subdivide it. It would be a lot of sufficient size to allow it to have two principal structures on one lot. It's not being subdivided.
Okay. And then the combined buildings, they don't exceed 40% of the total area? I don't know how to measure that, or I don't. Okay. And I didn't know how tall your building was. I was trying to look for plans and stuff, but I didn't know how tall, because it says it can't be over 35 feet tall.
It's two stories, and I think at the peak it might be 25.
And then I guess you said on your paperwork, there was an in-law suite, so will that be rented? I guess who's going to live there? Will there be a driveway? Will traffic come up along the backside of the property to the apartment? I mean, those are questions I just didn't know about. And then the final question I had for the rezoning was, is there any commercial, possible commercial use of that building, like car repair shop or something like that? I know personal use is fine.
The only permitted uses in an SF1 zone is citywide public uses by right, a single-family dwelling or a home office. That's it. Additional uses would allow cultural recreational and health facilities, zero lot lines, home occupation, horses kept in residential areas or temporary classrooms, and the only way, and healthcare clinic. The only way that could happen is they would have to come back and petition. All the adjacent property owners would be notified, and a condition that will use could, if approved, be given to that person at that location. No other commercial activities can go on there.
Okay. And I forgot to mention, anybody from here from Spring Ridge subdivision could please stand up? So I don't know if any of them will want to speak, but those are the residents that are here from our subdivision.
He had asked a question about renting out. That would not be allowed in that.
Well, it's no different than any other SF1 zone. We do not, we do not control whether or not a single-family home can be rented anywhere.
Oh, no. No, but the apartment.
Well, this is considered to be two principal structures on one lot. So the same requirements would go for each one of those. We don't have any control over whether you rent out your houses on any lot.
Okay. Okay. My understanding SF1 was one single-family home.
Because this lot is large enough, it meets the requirements to have two structures, two principal structures because of the size of it. It has more than, each separate structure has to have 80 foot of frontage and 10,000 square feet. The lot itself is more than 160 foot wide. It has more than 20,000 square feet, so we can have two principal structures.
Okay. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from the audience?
Roger Crawford, 8801 Crest Lane. I'm just two lots down from that, so I have line of sight to the building as well. And I applaud what she's doing here. I'm excited about what she's using the building for. I'm just, and probably much like Gary in the neighborhood, what happens when they move? And so our concern is also is that this become, and I'm not sure I'm really clear, so you may have to just say it, dumb it down a little bit, but it still feels like it's an apartment that could be rented to another party, and so you end up having almost like a multifamily type situation. So I don't understand how the city delineates.
Well, the house itself could be rented.
Right.
There's nothing to keep the house from being rented any more than there is the other structure that has a living quarters up above. Either one of them could be rented out.
Correct. So.
Your house on your lot could be rented out, and we wouldn't know that either.
Right. It's just that it's two structures, so it starts to feel like an apartment complex to me, and so I don't understand the difference.
Okay. Because the lot size is large enough to accommodate more than one principal structure. If there's more than one principal structure on a lot, it has to have the area requirements to meet it as if it were two separate lots. Which means there has to be at least 160 foot of frontage on the street, which they have more than 160 feet, and there has to be 10,000 square feet for each structure, and it meets both of those requirements. So we can have two principal structures on one lot, and then the spacing between the structures meets the requirements this set in the ordinance too.
And what's the parking restrictions on that?
Sorry?
The parking restrictions?
They're required to have two parking spaces per dwelling unit. The other structure itself would only have to have two. There's no additional parking requirements because she's using it for a storage area, so two parking spaces for each one is all that's required.
Okay, so four total, and then the driveway would just be standard. There's no restrictions there? Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's others that have comment, you don't have to wait. I mean, if you want to come up and just be able to make a comment, you can, so go ahead.
James and Nicole Harrington, 8965 Miller. So we're across the street southwest. And we're both totally okay with the building. We think it looks fine. We don't have any problem whatsoever with that. Our only concern is what's already been voiced here is the rental portion of that. I understand the zoning part, that it is a possibility of rental. Is there a, something that we can do to restrict the possibility of rental later? Whether, you know, if she decides to move in 10 years and someone rents both buildings or whatever, we would like to try to minimize the one-person, one-family scenario, but she still gets the benefit that she needs to be able to, you know, protect her property and the building that she's already built.
Well, with the zoning classification that she's asked for it to be rezoned, it only allows for a single-family dwelling. And again, I just explained how it could have two on there. We don't have anything in the ordinance that ever says that a single-family dwelling can't be rented.
In that case, my second question would be, is there, what's the benefit, I haven't asked her personally, but what's the benefit for her going to SF1? I mean, does, would it be okay to keep it as the A? Is that?
Can't have two structures on an A1 zone because she doesn't have enough frontage for, there again, it would have to have 400 feet of frontage on a public street and two acres for each structure.
Okay.
So in order to keep two structures, two principal structures on there, it has to be rezoned SF1.
Okay. And my last question on that, would it make everyone else happy to be able to, could we ask for a variance on that to where it's, you can keep it as A, but that also protects everyone else from the rental aspect of it, because it sounds like everyone's asking about that part of it.
Well, that's a major variance to allow it to go from two acres, less than two acres for each lot, to 10,000 square feet to each lot. And we don't normally create that size of a variance, and from 200 feet of frontage to 80 foot of frontage. It really gives you more protection than it stays as a single-family residence by being rezoned SF1.
Right, okay.
Patsy, one thing you might mention is because now that it is in the City of Springdale, right, and not in Benton County, it's subject to City of Springdale ordinances and community engagement will monitor, you know, will, they can get called if, you know, if that's your fear that, you know, with tenants that might, you know, junk up the yard later or whatever, you have that protection, is that now this is, whereas I don't know if Benton County does, you know, Benton County as a whole does that, but I do know that you have that protection now that it's part of the City of Springdale. They'll enforce all the ordinances.
Closed out, and they get a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, because we have, I mean, we see the direct front of it. The neighborhood sees the entire back, and we see the direct front, so we were more concerned of, you know, the renters being, you know, trashing out the whole place.
But as Peyton said, we do have community engagement or neighborhood services. It's called neighborhood services now. I'm not used to the new name yet. Yeah.
Okay, so one other question, because I talked to, I believe his name's Caleb from the city on Friday, and he said that if this were to be changed, it's possible because of the lot size, that there could potentially be a third building. Is that true?
Enough space to have a third building.
Okay, okay.
Would again have to come in and be rezoned to something different.
Okay, yeah, and I do like the idea that the guy brought from the subdivision, the community about the landscaping. Like, I do think she did a very good job building it. It blends in with her house. They could have chose a bright color for the building, but they chose a neutral color. So, and we stare straight at it. We just built a house, so right across the street. We stare at it from our windows. So she did a fabulous job building it, but I do think, like, doing landscaping would definitely hide it a little bit. We're about to do the same thing for our house, because we're wanting to hide it, so people can't see it. But I do like that, what they brought up, so.
We can make that request. We do not have any provisions to require her to do that.
Okay.
Maybe I can just clarify for my neighbors. When I started this project, I really had no intention of renting out any part of this building, but once I became part of the city and the building department came and looked at it and saw that there was plumbing and saw that there was air conditioning and saw that there was potential for it to become a living quarters, this is why I'm in this position. So it wasn't about me trying to fill the place up with a bunch of renters. It's just that potentially it could be rented, and so to protect you and to protect the city, we're trying to rezone it to make it legal, I guess.
Especially if it's sold sometime in the future. We have more control.
My name is Jim Gigantino. I live at 8838 Crest Lane, and so my property is directly across from the backside of it. And one of, I'm very glad to hear about what is going on. I'm also the, in addition to living there, I'm also the chair of the history department at the University of Arkansas, so what you're doing is very up my alley. My concern is echoing many of the concerns that have been raised already. If we look at the staff comments where we say that this is, it protects the positive aspects of neighborhood character, I would disagree with that. As you saw in the picture that Gary had circulated, this is a two-story corrugated metal structure and does not fit into the character of the neighborhood in the adjoining area. And so we understand, and I understand, that this is a product of an annexation, and it was built within the accordance of the Benton County regulations. But I would ask, now that it's in the City of Springdale, if you do decide to grant this ordinance, that you mitigate that for our community? Because in reality, this is a significant drain on my property value and the property values of everyone in the surrounding area, since when you come out of my front door, you look directly at a two-story corrugated metal structure. And so I would ask that you do everything you can to mitigate this by either landscaping or other design structures in order to truly make it as part of the neighborhood character, because I think at this point, it is not part of the neighborhood character. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Harry Price. I'm, let's see, from Fayetteville, 126 North 85th Avenue, Fayetteville. I know about this collection. It's wonderful. It's like having a stamp collection only bigger. So how do you hold a collection like this? I've known about this problem for quite a while, and I was trying to relate it to something that I could relate to. And this is what I've, the easiest analogy, or whatever you call them. If you're going down 412, I know this is different, but you're going down 412 and you see a speed limit sign. It says 55. There's a couple of county workers there. No problem. You look at your speedometer doing 55. You go on ways and the officer pulls you over for doing 55 in a 45, and you get a ticket, and you turn around immediately and go back to C, and sure enough, those people that were by that sign, they put up a new sign and it says 45. This is where I see her. She did everything right when she went by there, but now she's, now, now, I'm not getting after the officers, because they all did it right. I mean, they're doing their job, and you folks are doing your job, but she's stuck in the middle, and it hurts.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is it commission?
Well, it is unusual. I mean, I have permission from, before we annexed it, she did have permission from Benton County, and she did regulations. It's just, it's us in a awkward position. It's just... What are we going to do in the future? Same type thing if somebody's annexed, but they're doing what they start with. On to that. I personally can't, I personally can't say no to someone that is trying to do right. Best she can with what she's got, what she's been presented.
I couldn't remember if you did it.
Tried to do everything she could with, according to the law when she started this. It'd be tough for me to say I can't. I really couldn't say no to this. I would ask if you could, do put a buffer. Neighborhood would, you know, maybe the trees that they're asking for.
I would be more than happy to do that. I mean, as it is, that, you know, being sort of stopped in the middle of the project, my cost factor has grown immensely beyond, way beyond what I had ever planned on putting into this project. But I'd be more than happy to buffer myself against the backside of the neighborhood. I'm... happy to buffer myself against the backside of the neighborhood. I'm not feeling very warm and fuzzy about it all right now, so I'd, I'd like to keep what I'm doing on my property, my business, and what they're doing in their property, their business, and I'm good with putting up trees.
Neighbors can always put up trees on their side, too.
Also.
Yep.
I, I think I would agree with Dale on that, that, um, I mean, this is about as close as you can get to the dividing line on grandfathered in, but they did go through the system, and it could've been finished in time, and so to come back now, after that investment's been made, when, when it's, it was not annexed at the time that it was started, um, special circumstance that doesn't happen to everybody.
But I do think we'd be remiss without noticing that the neighborhood came forward and said, "We want to work with you," and she said, "We want to work with you," and this should be a model of how it's done, right, where you can have a few conversations and some open dialogue, and everybody goes home, and everybody goes back to business, and you get your garage built, and they get their trees, and everybody goes about life. So I appreciate the citizens of the neighborhood coming forward and sharing your thoughts and concerns. We appreciate you being open to it.
And, and I mean, I'd like to ask, as a point of clarity, and also just for the record, I mean, the implications of not granting this are what for the property owner?
Well, if the variance is not granted, her only recourse is through the court system. Or cut, feed off of it.
Can't get occupancy.
No, she can't get occupancy of it without going through court, too.
So we're in a situation where we've, like, like I think has been discussed, you know, property owner's gone down a, a certain road, complying with all the regulations at that point in time, and now we're trying to do what's best for everyone involved, you know, in a less than optimal situation, so...
And I'll tell you, Ms. Chaffin's been good to work with. We, we sit down and went through several scenarios to see what we could come up with of a way to make this work for the best we could, the situation that we have in hand.
Can you remind me again, the annexation that was done, the reasoning for that?
Because it's an island. It's totally surrounded by the city of Springdale all the way around. It creates a real issue for emergency services, for other kinds of things, because it's Benton County in the middle of all of Springdale. We closed in this one, and I think we did four, five, somebody, somebody out there told me five.
There were five, five total.
Yeah, five total, uh, islands that we annexed in, just to clean up the boundaries in that area out in there.
And all the, I mean, all the, I guess I'd say complications, rather, would still be, persist for the neighborhood regardless of the annexation. I think the, the pain that they're, they're looking at, right?
Well, if it stayed in the county and we didn't annex it in, it would've been the county had to close it out. She probably wouldn't have been stopped, and it would, it would continue as, as is, because she got the permits that she needed from the county. The only permit that she got, she would need from Springdale is a plumbing permit, because it was going to be hooked to Springdale Water.
Uh, it's actually, the electrical was the last bit. I had plumbing permits. The plumbing was all signed off prior to being annexed, and actually...
But it's Springdale Water, right?
I had a, yeah.
Yeah.
I had applied for, um, actually, water's all been connected.
Yeah.
So I'd applied for electrical permits early in October, and, um, I got the letter of annexation later in October, and I, at that point, um, they decided not to issue the permit because of the pending annexation.
My only reason asking, the purpose, um, of the annexation, um, I mean, there's not a simple answer on, on, on all of this here, but, um, when we do these in the future, I guess my only ask is, is that we make sure that we inform, and, and this is an extremely unique circumstance on here, I think, um, but it's put additional cost, like, like you had said. You know, the buffering, I, I agree as far as that you have, uh, a different purpose as far as the construction of your home versus a resident, uh, the, the subdivision and that whole piece, and I understand as far as wanting to put a buffer, that really kind of puts that between the two. Um, annexing in is gonna be beneficial to you, and it's also beneficial to the city as far as how you described it, um, but it has put a, a burden on you as well, and, um, I'm not sure what the answer is to associate it with it, um, but I think it's something that needs to be acknowledged in, in that whole piece, that when we run into these circumstances in the future, um, we need to work with the, the property owners on, on these types of circumstances in the future as well. So, I mean, I'm in favor as far as I think this is the right thing to do, to get everything to the city code the way we need to, and also address as far as the side setbacks. Um, but this is an interesting scenario that has put both on, um, adjacent property owners and, and to you as well on that. So, Colby, did you have something? Do you want to comment?
I just wanted to clarify. Patsy, did you say the only recourse was through the courts?
On the variance, it is.
But on the rezoning?
The rezoning will come to council. If the planning commission turns it down, that she can appeal the rezoning, but the variance is only through the court system.
Right, but the rezoning, she could appeal that to the council?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I guess the...
It's not rezoned, the, the variance is not needed.
Say that again, Pat.
If it's not rezoned, it really can't exist. That way, we can't give her a C of O for that, because it's, it doesn't meet the setback requirements, it doesn't meet the area requirements.
She won't get the permit.
I'm sorry?
She just won't get the permit.
Yeah, she won't get the permit and, and be able to get a C of O, and she can't get power to it either.
And it's useless to me without power. I can't store 100-year-old cars in a building when it's nine degrees outside, so...
Okay, this will be a call for the vote. Call for the vote.
And we're doing the, which first? Zoning first and...
Zoning first, yeah.
Okay.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
The rezoning passes eight zero, and we have a call for the votes for the variance for lower deviation or rear setback.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Yes.
He, uh, he's not here. Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
And the variance passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the 26th.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks to all that came for the comments on that as well. Uh, next item, R-19-09, and I'm probably gonna pronounce this wrong on here, so I apologize. Dale Renegar LLC, 13199 Sharp Springs Road, from A1 to C2, presented by Scott Wood.
Hi, um, I'm Tim Adams. Scott Woods, our GM up here. Uh, I'm one of the owners of the property. Uh, I put Scott's info.
Hang on just a minute.
Hang on a minute.
Just need to make sure you, you have, they need to make sure that you're authorized to be able to represent this.
Okay.
What was your name, sir?
Tim Adams.
Okay, we're good. Sorry, we just have to make sure we...
That's fine.
Have the right people.
It's actually Dale Ranger. It's just misspelling. Ranger's my middle name.
Okay.
Uh, the property at 13199, uh, Sharp Springs Road, we purchased late October, uh, in purpose to, uh, rent to our business, Adams Pest Control, and we're trying to get it zoned from A1 to C2.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use for the area. There's no other commercial zoning in that area. The rezoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan and is not recommended for approval.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Let's do the commission. It's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Uh, I'm sorry. I was, I was waiting. I do have a couple of questions, just real quickly.
By Paton.
Um, so if this is not rezoned, um, uh, it's, it's agricultural right now. It has what looks like a commercial building on it. How did that get built? Do we know how that ended up being built there?
It was built on before it was annexed into the city. It's another one of those situations that a lot of commercial-type development happened out in that area, and then it was annexed into the city.
It's, it's been a business-wide transmission. They have a, uh, two, they have a business license for the city of Springdale in 2018, and, I mean, should've done our due diligence on this, but it was advertised as a commercial property. It was used, being used as a commercial property, so...
It came in as a, as a non-conforming use, and they did get a business license at that location, but now we're...
Right, we went to...
We're putting in a totally different type business than what was there.
And if it's not rezoned, what is the, what are the options for conditional use there? None?
Not in an A1 zone. I mean, it could be a nursery, it could be a landscaping business. Those are the kinds of things that are allowed in an A1 zone, but not the type of business that you're, you'll really just be operating in office and storage of your trucks and equipment in that location.
Yes, ma'am.
Vehicles.
Right now, we have about six.
Keep in mind, though...
I know, I really don't like the spot zone. I know that.
Yes, and when we rezoned to C2, it is anything that's allowed in a C2 zone, not just the business that he is proposing right now. Not to say that you're not gonna do that, but we look at what is all of the possibilities that could go in at that location.
Yes, I agree. I just, you know, there's commercial bill that, you know, so, not, you know, how it got there.
The other thing is it sets a precedence for other people coming in, and, and then there's signage from the highway, you know, or, you know, then you get that started as well.
But with the conditional use, it could be used as a nursery or landscaping business with a conditional?
Actually, in an A1 zone, those are permitted uses.
They're permitted uses.
Right, right.
There's no conditional use at all in an A1.
It can be commercial, but different, not, not, not pest control.
Not for a pest control place, right.
Okay, that's all, that's all I wanted to know.
And we looked at the possibility, or we talked a little bit about going to an O1 district, which allows for single-family and, uh, offices, but because you're storing his equipment and that kind of stuff there, it doesn't fit in O1 either, so...
Yeah.
And in SF1 zone, which is a neighborhood commercial, um, that didn't work either. This is another one. We're bringing you the tough ones.
I know, I, I, yeah, I just hate it because it, you know, as it is, you know, I hate, I hate for it to go just sit there and being unused, you know, but, you know, you understand that it's not you, it's everything after you.
Yeah, I got that. When we plan on improving the property, we're tearing down, or we planned on tearing down a, an old sheet metal pole barn, and we're gonna put up another building that is like that up there now. There's really, uh, only two buildings up there. It looks like there's three. I don't know what that one is, but...
I think those are tractor trailers.
Oh, okay. Uh, but we were gonna put another, uh, building, about twenty, 2,500 square feet, closest size of what's up there now, and, uh, you know, we're willing to make improvements to the property. We...
But then you're also looking at expanding the use that really isn't fine for that area, and then the investment is even higher.
I know, we, we got a little duped on the property. It was, we just didn't look at it. It was already being used for commercial. Our real estate agents led us in the wrong direction on that, so we're trying to, on the back end, get this corrected, if possible.
What's the footage on, on the drive for C2?
Sorry?
Footage on the drive for, the driveway for the C2?
Um, if it's a two-way drive, it has to be 24 feet. It's a, what is it, 12-foot wide, maybe?
Probably.
It's a one-way drive.
Yes, yes, gravel road.
Is there any commercial zoning near?
No.
I mean, there's another pest, pest control company about five minutes away from there, but I know it's...
But it's on the other side of, it's on the other side of 49, though, isn't it?
Yes, uh, yeah, or, uh, the, uh, the cut through there.
On the, on the other side of...
It's on the same side of 49.
But it's, is it on the other side of 612?
Yes, across the bridge.
Yeah, but that's not in Springdale, either, I don't think.
I know, when we, when we brought the, when we were looking at the property, it was listed as Lowell on the, uh, on the advertisement, and then when we, we closed, we found out it was actually city of Springdale. We thought it was, uh, Benton County the whole time, uh, which, you know, standing up here looking like, I didn't cross my T's and dot my I's on that, but...
So I have a call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
No.
Compton.
No.
Covert.
No.
David.
No.
Haney.
No.
Mueller.
No.
Parker. Parsley.
Yes. So this does not pass, seven one.
You have the right to appeal the planning commission's decision to the city council. You have to file your appeal to the city clerk within 15 days from today, and you have to indicate to, in your appeal, why you think the planning commission's decision was in your, and you have to notify the adjacent property owners again.
Okay, same with the, uh, certified mail. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You file the letter with the city clerk's office within 15 days.
You got that on there. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Next item, R-19-10, Terry Metcalf and Beverly Bauer, 772 South 48th, and adjoining vacant parcel to the west from A1 to C2, presented by CEI Engineering.
Good evening, Ryan. You was the CEI. Uh, just as stated there, um, requested rezone is from A1 to C2. Um, the applicant is intending to bring forward a large-scale development consistent with using at 21 trades and services for self-storage. Met with Ms. Patsy and ran through some of the parameters and expectations to bring forward, uh, use of that nature in this particular location, and discussed the surrounding context and some of the complexities with this type of use in this, in this particular location, and expectations for commercial development standards alike.
Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Ensure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations. Encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood community and residential.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Let's do the commission.
Call for the vote.
Yes, I'm sorry. If you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Uh, John Edgman, and I actually live in Gravett, but my family owns, uh, property that's adjacent to this.
Okay.
On the information we received, it was actually rezoning two parcels. Has that changed now to just be rezoning one parcel?
It actually is, it's actually two parcels.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Yes, yes, they're actually rezoning both parcels.
Okay, yeah.
A total of, uh, yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, I lost the acreage.
Think you got it.
Nine point five seven.
Yeah.
So, and we're, we're for it, then? Okay, thank you.
Both parcels are...
Thank you. I have a call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
S is eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the 26th.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Next item, R-19-11, Leisure Homes Corporation, Tom Imbach, 815 Mill Streets, from SF2 to MF12, presented by 3040, is it?
Not 30.
I'm not 30.
No, you're not.
I'm Derek Sherburne, um, and I, I, you may have to check your books to see if I'm, 'cause Tom and 30 had to be in Fayetteville for a city council meeting, so...
I don't know what we do. I think it's just 30.
I think it was just 30, yeah.
I don't think so.
Authorization.
Yeah, 'cause I, we expected Tom and 30 both to be here, so we can't hear it without that authorization. Are they, where they could come this way and be here before we get...
For sure, yeah, 'cause they've already finished up at Fayetteville, so he just texted me.
Yeah, I'll just come back to this.
Come to, come on down.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next section is conditional use. Uh, first one, C-19-3, Michael and Andrea Goud, Goudry, sorry. 9374 Greenbrier Estates, Use Unit 50, agricultural occupation in an A1, presented by Michael and Andrea.
Uh, Michael Gaudry?
Gaudry, thank you. I'm having a hard time with last names tonight, I don't know, I'm there, sorry.
If you were in southern Louisiana, you'd recognize it.
There you go.
So, in 2015, we built a twenty-four by forty detached workshop, and, um, to move our hobbies into after I retired. My, my wife's a potter, and I do woodworking, art, mostly for art purposes. This year, we see our hobby turning into something a little more, actually, we started seeing that last year, to where we may have to start collecting sales tax if we sell the items. And that puts us in an item, a place where we actually have a business now. And, um, so this conditional use will allow us to, uh, to register and get a sales tax number and all that.
You don't have anyone coming to your shop to pick up anything else?
No.
The things that you create, you take to shows or other places like that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
This is kind of a unique...
Galleries, typically are sold in galleries, uh, or at the farmer market type of things, but we have no visitors necessarily at the house.
This is a subdivision that was annexed into the city after it was already subdivided. It remains an A1 zone. If it was a, an SF2 or an SF1 zone, it couldn't operate as a home occupation because it's in a detached structure. We did create in, uh, the ordinance, a use unit fifty, which is an agricultural occupation, which allows it to be in a detached facility. So, that's why you're seeing a use unit fifty as an agricultural occupation in an A1 zone. The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable, the off-street parking is acceptable, uh, refuge and service areas is acceptable, all utilities are acceptable. There's no screening requirements, they will not have a sign, the yard requirements are acceptable, the size and shape of the site is acceptable. Landscaping is not applicable. The general compatibility with the adjacent properties, uh, with the following conditions. The proposed residential structure and/or accessory structure contained on a recognized, non-conforming A1 zone parcel. No outside storage of material required for the operation of the business. Operated only by the resident members of the household and shall not have any employees, consensaries, or any other form of operator or helper where, whether such business is conducted on the premises or off the premises. Requires the use of an area no greater than thirty percent of the total heated living space of the residential structure or an accessory structure in an area no greater than the size of the residential structure. Generates no traffic, parking, and sewage or water use in excess of what is normal for agricultural use. Will not produce any fumes, odors, noise, or any other offensive effects that are not normal to agricultural activities. Stock and trade will not exceed ten percent of the floor area of the, of the accessory use. Will not require use of consumption on the premises of any food product thereon, will not provide medical treatment. No alteration of the outside appearance of the residential and/or accessory structure provision of a separate outside entrance for the business areas of the residential structures. And he's been made aware of all those conditions that I just talked about.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Just to the commission?
Is there a reason why we didn't just rezone it?
Why he didn't rezone it? If he rezoned it to SF1, then he can't do a home occupation in an accessory building.
Oh.
If you're in a home occupation in an SF zone, you have to be inside the house itself.
Oh.
This allows him to continue to use the shop he has there and remain agricultural.
Okay.
And as granted to him at this location, he can't transfer it anyplace else.
Okay.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney?
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Conditional use passes eight-zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the twenty-sixth, if you want.
Do I need to go anywhere?
I'm sorry?
Well, I need to...
I, I will make the presentation at, at council, but we recommend that you be there in case there are any other questions. Twenty-sixth, at six o'clock of March.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, C-19-04, Moon Pizza, three twenty-three East Emma Avenue, use unit forty, mobile vending in downtown. Form base code, neighborhood center type one, presented by Daphne Scott.
I was told they weren't going to be here tonight.
And next item on here is preliminary, uh, I'm sorry, a replat, eighteen dash zero-seven. Replat's Harbor Meadows, PUDS, Phase twenty-three, lots one A, dash two B, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. This is a remaining lot in Harbor Meadows, um, adjacent to Highway four-twelve, just to the east of the Zips Car Wash there. We're proposing to carve off one acre of that in that, um, southwesterly corner there. I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Um, we still have several planning comments of providing location description, utilities, movements of the lot lines, the right-of-way. The setback dimensions, the numbers, uh, the instrument numbers for off-site. Easements, all comments from utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval. Just to this lot?
It's proposed.
It's proposed, but it's not?
It's not in today. We've got, we've got approval from Springdale Water. It's at the health department, awaiting approval.
Uh, utility easements need to be labeled by book and page. Cannot dedicate easements over the top of already existing easements. The access easement for the adjacent property does not line up with the existing curb cut. The curb cut shown over the southern property line needs to be subdued. It should be cleared incidental, incidental, the established property line. Uh, please ensure all covenants and notes listed on previous final plats and replats are carried over. Uh, change the signature block for the LLC to a corporation resolution. Subdivision may require review and approval by Harbor Meadows POA or the Architectural Review Board. Have you been to them?
No, not yet.
Probably need to check with them to see if there's any, uh, any notation that they need, and then you need to add, the engineering comment is to add the surveyor's signature.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience?
That was the first round review. The second round review, we added, the curb cut on there is actually proposed. We don't allow proposed language on a plat. It has to be existing, current landscape, and things of that nature. This lot, when we were doing the research, there are five plats associated with this lot. Um, it does say the large lot is only allowed one access point. It's a covenant that was on the, on there from a note on a previous plat. Um, that's something they'll have to work out with, and that is really kind of one of the PUD, PUD regulation kind of items that...
They need to work that out with, with the POA as well, or the Architectural Review Committee.
For one access point?
Yeah, the access point, the original lot structure was encompassing the lot to the west, and it was considered one lot. And there was a strong note on the plat that said that they would only have one access point, which is already captured in that one, so... Um, that's just one of these things where the PUD is involved with the city, where we partner with them to kind of work hand in hand, and that was just one of the items that came out in the research, and we have to carry that over from the previous plat to this plat.
I'd, I'd like to see that comment, uh, from that plat, if, um, just not, not aware of that comment, so...
Will the Harbor Meadows sign stay on that other lot? Because you're throwing on there is...
Until it's removed, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Just to the commission? Be a motion.
Motion, subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Ms. Haney? I have a second. Second by Mr. Covert.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Replat passes eight-zero.
If you wanted to go to council next week, the ordinance needs to be our office by first evening.
Next item is, uh, large-scale, nineteen dash zero-five, Springdale Fire Department, number eight, northeast corner of Conneer and Huntsville, presented by ESI.
So, guys, that, even though that goes to council, the comments will have to be addressed and everything prior to that.
Right.
Go ahead, Jason.
Sorry, uh, Jason Apple, ESI. Uh, I do have Greg Walker with Miller-Walsh-Silak, uh, architect on the, on the project, uh, for fire station number eight. This project is located at the northeast corner of Conneer and Huntsville. And I'll answer any other questions.
Staff comments?
All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to the approval of construction. Is there a utility line on there that needs to be put in around, or is it? Twelve KV and above, do you know?
Would that be power, I would assume? We'll, we'll make sure. It's probably three phases, but I'll, I'll double check.
It's my understanding that the lot boundary is going to be adjusted to, from the north, closer to the...
Yeah, so initially, we, we had, um, submitted a lot combination for this, to take the two lots into one. I think since then, there's been a conversation of just moving that lot line north, um, outside, so that, um, that lot could be, um, given back to the public, to the board.
Okay, and then street improvements along Conneer would be completed all the way up to the property line, to the newly established property line, correct?
Correct, yeah, just north, just north of the entrance, yes.
Okay, with the sidewalk?
Yes.
Uh, did we get a unified lining plan?
Not sure.
Did we get one?
Yes.
Okay, nevermind, scratch that one. Uh, engineering comments, I, I'm unclear of what engineering comments are left on this, so I guess I'm going to have to call, go to you, because there were still comments left on the sheet that was submitted. Have we addressed all the drainage issues on this one?
Yes, I believe all drainage issues were taken care of.
Okay.
What else do we have on the, on your sheet?
I'm sorry?
What else do we have on your sheet?
Uh, well, we have the channel lining design, the, uh, limited drainage report still says we need detailed calculations, we needed the flowing off-site must be maintained in a drainage structure facilities and cannot flow through neighboring sites. Those were the big ones, and sidewalks, and we just talked about the sidewalks are going to be improved.
Okay.
Streetlights, is there streetlights included in this, too?
Yeah, everything was taken care of.
Okay.
Is that it? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Just to the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Large-scale passes eight-zero.
Thank you.
Uh, next section, Board of Adjustments, B-19-12, John and Mary Thompson, twenty-seven fifty-seven East Robinson Atroads, variance to allow building to remain at current location, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. There's been a one-story building on the southern side of this property for some time. Um, we've submitted an informal plat to create two lots on this site. And we're just requesting the variance to allow this building to remain, um, within the setback.
How close is it, do you know?
It's five feet, five and a half feet is the closest point. There's a twenty-foot setback.
Staff comments?
It's been there.
For a while.
Several years, yeah.
Okay. Any questions or comments in the audience? Just to the commission?
So, why, why is this coming forth? Was it just something that was caught, or...
I, I believe since we submitted the plat, we're, we're splitting this lot into two lots. And so, that's what triggered this comment.
Yeah, with, and, planning is our, you know, our basis for our land use development and everything else. So, whenever we see something in non-compliance, we have the regulatory control to pull it into compliance, and that makes, to get the variance to, if he doesn't get the variance, it stops the process, or the building has to be torn down. So, it's just one of those to pull it in, in compliance with our zoning and our guidelines, just to make it legal for them to have a legal operating unit there, so...
It wouldn't be a cloud on the title if it sells sometime in the future because of variance.
Okay, but that's also our one opportunity to clean up?
Clean this one up means the building has to go.
Not the whole thing.
It's actually two feet, isn't it? Is the...
I was going to say, it looked like it was right against the fence to me.
Berd's request says from twenty to two feet.
Oh, I'm sorry, the building is, that, there's a little piece of the building that's five feet, I'm sorry.
It's really close to the...
It's two feet, yes.
It's really close to the property line, yes.
Can we hear from the fire department on that? Does that change?
Wayne Miller, Springdale Fire. This was there before the neighborhood. It's been there as long as I can remember. They're a non-compliant building group anyway. I mean, they're built out of star foam and metal. When they burn, they're going to burn, but it was there.
Let's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Call for, call for the vote by Mrs. Haney?
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
No.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
No.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
No.
This passes five-three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item, B-19-14, Command, Command Pest, sixteen oh-seven North Thompson, variance for a second sign on pole, presented by Lee Guston.
Yes. Um, Lee Guston with, uh, Command Pest Control, the manager. When we bought the said property at sixteen oh-seven, we refurbished the existing sign, which is a hundred and fifty square feet. That's, that's the ordinance, I believe. We're asking to add a four-by-eight digital below that, the existing sign, not a new pole. We have done quite a bit of upgrades on this property. I don't know if you know this, the previous sign was hanging down, broken, and we've, we've repainted it, really made it look nice. We've also, uh, against the city's advice, we've, we've cleared, I guess, at least thirty trees that were growing through the fence, and eventually, we're going, I'd say, the next couple of years, put a new fence there, too. So, we're really trying to get this property, you know, up looking nicer, but we are requesting a four-by-eight digital.
Staff comments? I'm sorry.
Well, we just, we feel other entities enjoy. I, I know there probably is grandfather-type situations in Springdale, but, and I think y'all have a picture of that sign, too.
I don't do signs, so is my, my back there?
I do have a representative of the sign, if y'all have any questions for him.
The sign ordinance says in a C-five zone, you are allowed one non-flashing freestanding sign, no larger than a hundred and fifty square feet per sign face with a maximum height of thirty feet. So, that's what they have now.
Yes.
Okay, so you have the maximum amount allowed per ordinance, and what you're asking is to add, what's the size of the other one?
It's a four-by-eight digital, right below it.
That's the same requirement for anything that's in C2, C5, or C6. That's the, uh, for each lot or parcel shall contain, for each separately licensed business located thereon, no more than one non-flashing freestanding sign, no larger than a hundred and fifty square feet per sign face. Okay? I, just so you know what the ordinance says. Is there anything I'm missing?
Thanks, Mike.
Sign for the same business that's already, I mean, the, the sign they have now, they're wanting to add another sign for the same business.
That's correct, right?
Yes.
And the sign that they have now meets the maximum requirement of what is allowed for that zoning type. And they're asking for another four-by-eight sign to be added to the same pole.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
Uh, Mike Johnson, formerly with Fast Science. Uh, we just wanted to add there that we took the existing sign that had been there, that was actually falling down. Instead of tearing everything apart and reconstructing, we used the existing sign there. And the only addition to this with a four-by-eight is because it is digital. So, it does have a different quality to it than just your standard sign that's sitting there. So, it's actually giving information, which in that specific part of the property really does enhance the property down that location, so...
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Colby Fulfer, thirteen twenty-three, San Miguel here in Springdale. I think they've done a good job on this property, as far as property owners. They've done a good job kinda giving that a new life in that area. I think they've been good stewards with what they've had, which leads me to believe they'll be a good steward of this signage as well. I think adding the sign, the digital sign below, is actually going to help minimize any type of visual intrusion. They've kinda minimized the large sign that they are allowed by putting more information in a smaller space with the digital part. So I think it'll, I think it'll be more appealing to do it this way. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? To the commission.
I think the problem we run into is that you add that, and then that sets a precedence for everyone else, everywhere else in town is... I don't see any special circumstance, and I appreciate that they've done a good job cleaning up the property. There's not really a special circumstance for myself to be able to allow that and expect the rest of the city to follow our ordinance.
If I could say, there are other entities, I'm sure it was a long time ago, but there are several entities in Springdale that have larger signs than a hundred and fifty square feet.
And they should only be there if they were grandfathered in?
But am I correct, though, that the issue wasn't the size, it was the, because it was flashing?
No, they're adding, they have the maximum size sign they could have. They're adding another four-by-eight sign that's going to be digital. And I understand from what y'all said, that being able to put the digital in the existing sign, because of the age of the sign, it couldn't be put inside that. It's why we're going to a separate sign?
Yes.
You could have taken that sign on the top off and put the whole thing on the top and only had... I can visualize things really simply in my mind, how you could do that kind of stuff, too.
Yes, instead of doing that, we would add to remove everything, because actually, the, we had to re-weld everything at the top, because it was actually structurally unsound when they bought the property. And I don't think they even knew that till we actually went out there to go look at it, to work on it. So we suggested, you know, refitting that frame, welding it down, keeping the original post in there. We repainted it. And so it's just that, it's like anything else you see out there with the churches and everything else out there. It's just a small sign below that relays information LED. And we kept the uniform piece at the top of the sign and totally kept that structure. Other than that, we would have to totally just take everything out. So it is a total different look, like you say.
Let's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
No.
Haney?
No.
No.
This is not pass, six-two.
Okay, I have a question to ask Sarah. This is in the sign ordinance, can this be appealed to City Council?
Sign ordinance can be appealed to City Council, it's not in the zoning.
Okay, same procedure, they have to file their appeal with the City Council, I mean, with the City Clerk. I gotta see what the timeframe is, hold on. We don't do a lot of sign ordinance variances, so that... Mike, do you know without me having to look it up? Um... You will stay around, I'll look it up before you leave. It's gonna take me a little bit to find it, because I don't do this very often.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh, wait, wait, wait. Okay, it says, "Any party agreed by the decision of the Board of Adjustment in granting or denying a variance may appeal the decision to the City Council within thirty days of the Board of Adjustment' decision by giving notice there of, to the City Clerk." So you have to file a notice with your City Clerk within thirty days from today. Okay?
All right, thank you. Next item, B nineteen dash fifteen, Bertha Martinez de Patino, twenty-six seventy-eight Woodford Street. Variance for to increase height of fence and front yard from three feet to seven feet, presented by Bertha Martinez de Patino. Can you pull that mic down a little bit?
She was just wanting to get permission from the city to...
I have to pull it up before we can hear you.
She was just wanting to get permission from the city to keep the fence that she has, the six... She, it's seven feet tall, but the lawyer says it can only be three feet, three feet tall.
Staff comments?
I mean, the ordinance says a three-foot-tall fence around the front perimeter. We have very few variances that have been given to that. I don't really have any comment. We've got pictures, can you load the pictures? But the planning commission members all got copies of the pictures.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission. Yeah?
I went out and looked at your property on two different occasions. I know we have very specific rules to follow and codes to follow. There's fencing all over the neighborhood, and there's no question about that. We've had some real interesting conversations this evening. This presents another one in my mind, and just speaking for myself, I applaud your effort. The fencing that you've put there is very artistic, very well done. The brickwork, the stone work, the metal work is all first-class. Whoever did that work did a really good job.
Thank you.
Maybe that's you. It looks very artistic and it's very well done, so I commend you for that. The problem is, it doesn't really follow what we've asked you to do as a city. And the word I think that you would probably hear would be precedent. Precedent can mean something that happens one time and one time only. And maybe if we set a precedent, then others will follow. Precedent can also mean a long-established pattern of behavior, and I think in this case, that clearly doesn't fit. I think you made a mistake, I don't think you did it willfully. But I would say, at least from my mind, I certainly like to see us leave the fence the way that it is. I can't speak for the neighborhood, I don't know if we've had comments from the public or how all of you would feel, but I just think it is a compliment to the neighborhood and to the city, so.
Thank you, Dr. Compton.
I could not agree more. There's a lot of times where we have things brought before us that, as much as we dislike having to ask them to take it down, we have, we're faced with that challenge. In this case, I would tell you, this is one of the prettiest things I've seen that we've had a problem with. If anything, I'd like to see more problems like this in the city, because it was just beautiful work, very well done.
Thank you.
And I think enhances the house, I think enhances the neighborhood. I think the direction in that neighborhood would be great if it would go this direction in the next ten to fifteen years, to Dr. Compton's point. So I will support this project.
Let's be a call for the vote.
Well, I'd like, is the city attorney present?
Yeah, Sarah's here.
Sarah's here.
Could you address the setting of the precedence, what this does? And then also, is it any, in other words, can, could the posts remain and the fence be lowered? Or is any built, anything built?
All right, so to address precedent, I'm giving you my opinion on how precedent works. If you agree to something one time, that doesn't mean that every time there is something similarly situated, you have to agree to the exact same thing. And the difference between each of those is you need to be able to show a distinguishment between them. And if you are able to distinguish one instance from another issue, instance, and just create a record as to why you think this is good in one case and not the other, then I'm not going to tell you you should vote the same or different, I will say that's something that I can back.
Okay. And then as far as if it does, if it fails, could they lower just the fence portion and maintain the posts?
The posts, I would need to take a look at the ordinance, see the definition of fence on that, and I'm happy to take a look at that right now.
Yeah, I would like to hear that.
How did this come to us as far as needing to be addressed, anyway?
Get a code violation on this one? I think that's where it came through, through community engagement. It came through community engagement, which usually means either they were in the neighborhood, or there was a complaint about it, is how we get it.
Me, that's an important, like, an important point, because we've had instances where, you know, we have just driven through the neighborhood and things end up in front of us. And I think the, maybe the spirit of it is that they, their neighbors don't like it and they call it in. So for me, there's a big difference between whether their neighbors around them don't like it and called it in, or if we happen to be there.
I can't answer that if it was...
I mean, you know, clearly, it looks nicer than some of just the standard wood fencing in the neighborhood. You know, the problem is...
You put the fence in for security, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
My only other, my counterpoint to what I just said would be, though, you know, if we like seven-foot-tall brick fences in the front yard, we could make that allowable. But I think we don't have that allowable for a reason, even though it looks nice, and even though they put it up. So I, those are my two things on both sides.
I'm weighing it, too, because it is really nice, and it does enhance the house. But they did not go through channels to have it built. That's tough, tough decision.
How long did it take you to build that fence?
She's had one year.
Here. Thanks.
I called Ron Finley, there was no complaint called in by the residents.
They found it when they were out in the neighborhood?
Something other happened.
That's what Danny said.
Let's be a call for the vote. Go ahead, Sarah, if you had something else.
I was in the process of looking up. I think it's, without looking at the ordinance itself, I think structural versus decoration might be different, but I wouldn't be comfortable saying you can keep one higher than the other. So I'm, if you're comfortable voting, you can go ahead and vote, but I'm in the process of looking that up.
Okay, I, yeah, I'd rather...
I couldn't find a definition.
But at a minimum, it would be what's in front of the house, not the arches on the side.
It's everything from the front edge of the house, what would be considered the front yard, right?
I mean, you know, if the archways are allowed and they just lowered the side fence, that would be fairly easy to do.
I honestly, I still have to respectfully disagree. We've got a family that's put a great deal of time and money into a property that we don't normally see across the city. They're trying to beautify and make it nicer. It's not just the fence, if you take a look at the pictures, it's the landscaping, it's the way they've manicured the yard. There's a great deal of care going into this. And while I do understand the points made, and I respect everyone's opinion, we have left a lot of things up that were not nearly this nice in the city to pass a variance, versus tearing down someone's property that they've invested time and money into, as much as this family has. So I would just ask us to just carefully consider that when we make that decision.
Let's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Parsley?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
The variance passes seven-one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going back to...
I see Furry this time.
This is Leisure Homes, correct? Nineteen dash eleven, Tom Imbach, eight fifteen Mill Street, SF-two to MF-twelve, and...
My name is Furry Forty. I apologize for not being here earlier, and appreciate you guys still taking up this item tonight. This is the lot that was on the south side of Manor Way, that is at the entrance of that recently completed project. And it was not originally included in the PUD and left outside of it, because we thought it may be a commercial lot. However, we'd like to do a three-unit building on that lot. That would be exactly the same as the one that's across the street, the two-bedroom, single garage unit. So that's why we're asking to rezone it.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates medium-density residential, or residential places in Keweenaw. Following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Check the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, environmental factors, and sure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size and allow an increase to medium or high-density residential use when land values prevent economic development of low-density residential.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Here's the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Rezoning passes eight zero.
Staff will repair the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you very much.
Just before you make comments, interesting meeting, I think, this evening.
I was gonna say, we really tried to give you all the difficult ones at one time at the same time.
Well, and really, the comment that I wanted to make was, is that, you know, I understand the concerns about precedents and things, but that's why we hear each of these as single entities. And that's why this process works, as far as, from a planning commission piece. I know one of the things that I always strive to do up here is, when there's an opportunity, and be able to teach and educate our residents of the city. And I think that's still a responsibility that we do have as well. But also to, you know, a lot of it's been handed to us, as far as things of how the city has been shaped over the years. And we just want to bring it up to code the way it needs to be and what's gonna be right for us for the city going forward on that. So I just wanted to just make that comment that I'm not as concerned about precedents that's set, because I feel like that we give each of these as an opportunity to see these types of things going forward on that, so. But, yes.
If you're going to do something different from one property to another, though, that are similar, I would just ask that you make a record, that will make my job a little bit easier.
Thank you, Sarah. Yeah, a lot of interesting things tonight, but that is a good thing about this process. And I just wanted us to, you know, feel confident about how we're addressing these things going forward in the future on it, so. Director report?
Our regular work session night is during spring break. So my question is, do we want to wait and schedule one for the nineteenth, or do we need to change the date?
I recommend that we don't meet as far as for that. Unless there is something that has been presented to us that would require a work session, we might have to look at a different date associated with it. If there's not anything pressing associated with it, then I would say we move those to an April work session. Is that good with everybody?
So the April work session would be the sixteenth.
Okay.
I don't have anything else. I do want you to know, we need to keep Ben's family, and their parents are going through some medical issues right now. I, I do want you to know, we need to keep Ben's family, and, and their prayers are going through some medical issues right now, and they could use our prayers too.
And congratulations, Peyton, I'm glad we had your attention all night.
Yeah, I didn't ask too many crazy questions, then, I don't know, went by in a blur or something.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you.